It's the awake it.
All right. Good evening, everybody. For the record, Thursday, March 23rd, 2023, it's 5:15 PM. Time for the regular meeting of the Wenatchee City Council. Called the meeting to order, as always, you start with a pledge to our flag and Councilmember Hornby said he would lead us today. All rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilmember Hornby. And for roll call this evening, we have Councilmembers Huffaker and Councilmember Poyer are both traveling today and not available. So we'll start our meeting with citizens' comment. Just so you're aware, all of the items on tonight's agenda are action items. They do not require a public hearing. So if you'd like to talk to us about the land exchange agreement or bird scooters or anything like that, this would be your time to come up and address the city council. Otherwise, in action items, where I think we're just going to crank. Justin, you can speak for the PUD during the action item on Confluence Parkway if you like. But anybody else want to address this? See, no takers. We will jump onto our consent items. The first item on our agenda, that would be the approval of today's agenda, the vouchers and the minutes from the previous meetings and some work done by Hurst Construction.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion that we approve the consent items consisting of this evening's agenda, vouchers, minutes from previous meetings. And this motion includes the city council to accept the work performed by the contractor, Hurst Construction LLC, on the Maiden Lane Temporary Extension Project, City Project Number 2209, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Kula, second by Councilmember Hornby, to adopt this evening's consent items, including the agenda, the vouchers, and the minutes from previous meetings, and to accept the work performed by the contractor, Hurst Construction LLC, for the Maiden Lane Temporary Extension Project, City Project Number 2209, and further authorize the mayor to sign the final contract voucher. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, our first action item is the Confluence Parkway Land Exchange Agreement between Shiloh County PUD and the city of Wenatchee. So Laura, you want to come up, present? And then Justin, you can come up and join her or watch from the back, whatever you want to do.
All right. Good evening, Council Laura Gloria, Executive Services Director. That item before you is the Confluence Parkway Land Exchange Agreement between the PUD and the city of Wenatchee. I will note that the motion was requested in substantially similar form, but with the PUD approving the agreement on Monday, the one that is in your packet is the final, so there are no additional changes. So I did want to clarify that. That is the final, proposed final agreement. So with that, I have a presentation just to create a framework around what the agreement is about. I know we've been talking about Confluence Parkway a long time, but this is a very specific agreement to the mitigation, specific to a very specific process. So with that. Let me get my notes here. So today we're discussing the land exchange agreement as it relates to Confluence Parkway under NEPA, which is the environmental assessment process, and specifically Section 4F. So what you see on the screen here is the proposed alignment of the project. So NEPA is the environmental policy that is, that we are required to do specifically for the project because we have federal funds that are funding it. So we received the INFRA funds awards in June of 2021. Because of that, FHWA or the Federal Highways Administration is the lead agency for the project. What that means is, you know, we are abiding by all the federal rules and regulations. We have our local laws, which are great, but we also are abiding by all of the federal laws when it comes to compliance in the NEPA and in the future use of the INFRA funds. We are the co-lead, and then WashDOT is also a co-lead as an administrator of the program. So under the NEPA umbrella, and we'll all pretend this looks like an umbrella because I couldn't find the graphic, there is NEPA. But then there's also all of these other regulatory requirements that you see there. So we have to abide by the Endangered Species Act by Section 106, which is regarding, is regarding cultural and historic resources. And then we have Section 4F, which is what we're talking about today. And within all of this, we're also engaging our stakeholders, keeping our community involved, and that includes special interest groups or impacted users. So again, while there are lots of different processes today specific to 4F, we have all kinds of other agreements and requirements that are going to be required as the other processes. But for today, we're simply talking about 4F. And 4F is specific to park and recreation land. So FHWA, since again, this is what I would consider a federal project because it's federally funded, they have, they are prohibited from approving a project that uses land from parks, recreation areas, wildlife, or refuge areas unless there is no feasible and prudent alternative, and the project includes all possible planning to minimize harm to the property. So through the planning process that we've done over the last couple of years, we have concluded that C4, that version that you saw in the beginning, is the only feasible alternative. That's really the only place that it can go. So in essence, now through this process, we're trying to do all possible planning to minimize harms to the property, minimize harms to the park, to the parks' properties. So that's where the Shalane PUD comes, comes into play. So they own those park properties, and those are Confluence State Park, the Haran Natural Area within Confluence State Park, the Apple Capital Loop Trail, and Walla Walla Point Park. I want to clarify that Walla Walla Point Park is not impacted, but because of the kind of the area that we look at when we're looking at the project impacts, we go further than just the, the direct project, right? We look a little bit further to see are there any ancillary impacts. So we did look at Walla Walla Point Park, but there are no impacts to it. So we've been working with the PUD to look at all possible planning. And then additionally, because the PUD manages and owns these properties under their Rock Island Hydroelectric Project License, we have also been working with them to coordinate stakeholder review and the overall outreach process so that all of this work can eventually be submitted to FERC to be able to use the project, the properties needed for the project. So that's what the land exchange agreement today is about. I know that was a lot of different layers, but there's, there's a lot of complicated stuff, but that's why I wanted to clarify who's, why, who's involved with what and why we're having to do these steps. So I'm going to dig into the actual proposed mitigation. So the stuff that you see on the screen is all of the things that the environmental assessment looks at and that we look at in terms of impacts to the park properties, and then try to figure out what is the appropriate mitigation. So I'm just going to go property by property. So for Confluence State Park, here are the impacts. So I will need about one acre of property, and that will impact the park staff housing, which will need to be relocated. There are also impacts to the park and park users with proximity to the project. Those are visual and noise impacts. And when we're talking about Confluence State Park, we're talking about the property on the north side of the Wenatchee River where the campgrounds are. We also have impacts to the riparian habitat on the, on the banks, and that'll be where the new bridge will land. And then the park also conflicts with existing irrigation wells that the PUD owns. So as mitigation, we are replacing, relocating and replacing the state housing. We're incorporating landscaping elements to help buffer those visual and noise impacts. We're replacing the riparian impacts along the riverfront, and we're relocating and replacing those irrigation wells. I do want to key in here on replacement of riparian habitat in accordance with aquatic resource permit requirements. So we don't just get to say, yeah, we've replanted it, it's good to go. We have to go through another agency to also get, you know, what kind of planting? How long are we going to monitor it? How would we make sure, how do we make sure it's successful? So this is, you know, one of many steps to make sure that, that this is done properly. But we will replace it in accordance with those additional requirements. So to the Haran area, the project is incorporating about 4.7 acres. This is the area that is adjacent to the utility corridor. So this is the area that's adjacent to the railroad tracks where the current Apple Capital Loop Trail is. This area is currently served, is a, serves as a utility corridor with, and it has water, sewer, and overhead power lines. The area is separated from the passive recreation space of the Haran area, so the passive trails, the gravel trails, as a lot of you know them, those will not be impacted from the project footprint. But there will be some visual and noise levels that are experienced by those users in that footprint. So what are we doing to mitigate that? Again, replacement of property. So at a ratio of one for one of equal or quality, or of equal or better quality, incorporating the same landscaping elements that we talked about previously, like earthen berms, trees, landscaping, and other things for noise and visual impacts. In certain areas, we're using retaining walls instead of fill. Fill can degrade over time. We don't, we know, we want to be sensitive about the areas that we're, we're managing and doing maintenance. And so a retaining wall is much, much more durable and less ongoing maintenance. And then this gives us an opportunity to also replace and enhance some of the observation spaces. This is the last one here. So impacts to the Apple Capital Loop Trail. So there's about 3,000 linear feet of impacts to the trail adjacent to the rail, to the railroad, between the PUD service yard and then the existing pedestrian bridge. Recreational users on that trail would see quite a visual impact because you will be next to the roadway in this area. And then additionally, there are some places where the trail and the roadway are close to each other, so there will be noise increases at that, at those locations. So what are we doing to minimize that? In-kind replacement. So the loop trail will stay whole. It'll be 10 miles all the way around. You'll still have the same connections, which is incredibly important. And then we also have more noise-reducing features, more than berms here. So we have noise walls. We're playing with the slope of the trail to try to make those noise walls a little taller and separate the users from the cars in certain areas. Also continuing to do all the landscaping elements, though, to maintain that visual screening. And then continue to enhance the trail with other opportunities for art or educational opportunities in coordination with the PUD. So when we talk about the land exchange, so this here is the map. And these maps are in the agreement, and they can be blown up a bit more for those who want to see them in a bit more detail. But what we're seeing here, the blue shaded area is what we will need for the project. So that will be where the new roadway will be. I want to point out that down here, and I know it's very light, but you can see where the passive trails are, the gravel trails. And so, you know, we've gotten questions about impacts to these, that the project is not near those at all. It's staying up here near the railroad tracks. So this is the land that we will be removing from the park. And then this is the proposed property that we are going to try to acquire to replace that. These are under private property ownership, so we'll have to go through the appropriate federal and state acquisition process. But in essence, we would be acquiring this section here and adding that to back into the park and this section here. And that's actually where the new state park house would go, since we're moving that, moving that there as well. But we also have more things, as I talked about earlier. So relocating the trail from Holly Street, it's currently on Holly Street, street side, that will actually go on the east side of the PUD property. So that will be a much better user experience. And then in-kind trail replacement along the roadway here before you get to the pedestrian bridge. We will also be removing the existing pedestrian bridge and building a new combined vehicle and pedestrian bridge. So that was something that we wanted to do to reduce the impact on the river, reduce the piers that are in the river. And then along with that, all of the different berms and noise walls and things that will be designed with the project to make sure that we can further address those impacts to the users. A couple of additional measures. So shifting the alignment west along the Wenatchee Confluence State Park. So an original iteration of the project actually had the project kind of taking out the entrance to Confluence State Park. We moved it in order to, A, not, not do that, but also a big part of that was to create more of a separation between the new roadway and the campgrounds. So that was something that we worked with the PUD to, to make sure that that was part of the project. Relocation of the trail along Holly Street. That is not a required impact. We don't impact that as part of the project, so that could stay in place. But we wanted to improve the user experience, and we wanted to make sure that the trail stayed, stayed whole. This also allows us to have a net zero benefit for the, for the trail. And what I mean by that is we are, right now, the trail on Holly Street is on the road. And the trail right here where, you guys can see my cursor, oh, no, I can see my cursor. Can you guys see it?
No, but we know what we're talking about.
Okay. So right now, there's, let's say, half of trail along Holly Street next to the roadway, and there's the other portion of the trail that is not next to the roadway. In essence, we are swapping them, right? Because now the trail on Holly Street will be away from the roadway, but the trail from the north end of the PUD yard to the pedestrian bridge will be next to the roadway. So there's, what I'm trying to say is there's no net gain of trail next to the roadway. So that is the 3,000, the extra 5,100 linear feet that encompasses the trail relocation to, that is also included in here. And then the last one was what I talked about earlier with the replacement of the existing pedestrian bridge. On a newer, wider structure, I believe the existing bridge is about eight feet wide. This is about 16 feet wide, so it'll allow for both directional traffic for pedestrians. And lastly, there are lots of contingent actions still for this, excuse me. So when I wrote this, we were still pending the commissioner meeting, the PD commissioner meeting on the 20th. So I'm happy to let the council know that the PD commissioners approved that on Monday. This is still pending the conclusion of the NEPA process, so all of these actions are consistent contingent upon FHWA's approval, WashDOT's approval. It's pending the city's ability to finalize the necessary funding for the project. So this is for Confluence Parkway North, which we have, hopefully, we'll be getting the Move Ahead Washington money for. Pending the FERC's approval of the amendment for the PUD's Rock Island license, so they'll have to do that land swap. And they need to do that, but we need to finish NEPA first. So again, contingent upon another contingency. But lastly, again, all of the terms in the agreement are subject to, receiving the necessary federal, state, and other permitting agency approval. So that's definitely written within their, within their agreement. And that's my last question. So last thing I want to say is I want to thank Justin Erickson and his team, Kirk Hudson, and then Rob Jammerman and Steve Smith on our team. This has been quite, quite the effort and really appreciate everyone coming together and getting this done to move the project forward. So happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Laura? I can tell you, they've been working on this for the better part of two years, and I think really got to it about six months ago, and it's been cranking pretty hard. And I think this is a, this is as good as it's going to get for us. And I think it puts us working together with the PUD going forward on a number of issues that were important, not only to the PUD, but to the city and to our combined constituents that are the same people. And so we got to make sure we're doing what's right by the community as well. So hats off to the PUD staff and our staff. They did a remarkable job. Any questions for them? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the land exchange agreement with the Public Utility District Number One of Shalane County and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Cuevas, for the city council to approve the mayor's signature on the land exchange agreement with Shiloh County PUD Number One of Shalane County. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Laura. Thank you, Justin. All right, next up is an amendment regarding our police officer service with Shalane County PUD. Captain Chance, good evening.
Good evening, counsel. I'm Captain Brian Chance with Wenatchee Police Department. I'm here to just talk briefly about the 14th amendment to the service agreement between the city of Wenatchee Police Department and the PUD. It was put in place originally back in 2010 and is an understanding of police performing pre-approved patrols on PUD properties at their request during events or other high-traffic times, weekends, things like that. So this is a standard agreement that comes around, or an amendment, sorry, that comes around each year and simply reflects the increase in wages for the police officers performing the work. So the request before you is to authorize the mayor's signature to the amendment to put it in effect.
Any questions for Captain Chance? This is fairly routine. I think at some point, as Danielle and our legal staff works on this, probably next year, they'll might update this and just give the mayor the authority to just do this every year as the updates come and not bring them back to you guys, but that'll be a chance for you guys perhaps next year to make that decision. So I think there's some talk about, this is routine enough that maybe designated entire council approval once a year, but. All right, if there's any questions, I entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for city council to approve and authorize the mayor's signature for Amendment Number 14 to Service Agreement SA Number 10-182, which reflects the chargeable overtime rates for police officers.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Roger Nosteian, to approve and authorize the mayor's signature for Amendment Number 14 to the Service Agreement SA Number 10-182, which reflects the chargeable overtime rates for police officers. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Captain.
Thank you.
Well, I thought it was at the 14th amendment, I was going to the Constitution. I was starting to figure out what the 14th amendment was. I didn't know if we were, how that was working. So. All right, Jake Lewin, Confluence Parkway Supplement Number One.
Yes, good evening, mayor and council. I'm here, this is specifically Confluence Parkway South. So I'm here to requesting to approve and authorize the mayor to execute supplement number one with Jacobs for additional owner advisor services for Confluence Parkway. We selected Jacobs late last year as our owner advisor, and we signed an original agreement with them on December 19th of last year. And the purpose of that original agreement was to assist us with the selection and approval of a project delivery method with how we're going to get project, Confluence Parkway done within our grant funding timelines. And so then actually, earlier today, we went before the state's project review committee and did receive approval to deliver Confluence Parkway using progressive design build. So a pretty big milestone.
Just for the council, you know, we've talked about doing design build, and just because we think we want to do design build doesn't mean we get to do design build. We have to get approval from WashDOT and FHWA and others. And so it's quite a process to go through to get approval to do that. And so your staff got that approval today. So that's a remarkable accomplishment for Jake and the team for getting that. That wasn't always, it's not an easy process to jump through. So that's a sign that they have confidence in our team to execute with Jacobs and others, but.
That's right, yeah. I appreciate that. And yeah, that, that did represent about three months of work to get to this point. You know, a lot of validation of what we've been done up to this point. We held a workshop where we brought in a lot of parties to participate and give us feedback and validate the decisions that we were making, you know, both qualitatively and quantitatively in terms of the sort of pros and cons of our project for whether we, these different methods of how we would deliver it. So, so this next supplement with Jacobs, it will be for the, kind of the next steps that need to take place. That's cost validation, which, you know, our grant application was based on 2020 values. So now we need to look at updating that cost estimate based on mid-2025 construction numbers. In the last two years, we've definitely seen the market trend and cost escalation. So we want to have a better understanding where that's at. And then also doing some costs and risk assessments, value engineering, some opportunities we can find to, to try to bring the funding down for our scope. And then additional pre-design activities like geotechnical investigations, utility coordination, mapping, just other activities that will inform a design build team to give us good proposals when we get to that a little bit later this year. And then also the main part of this is to help us procure a design build team. So with the INFRA grant, we do have a fast-track schedule to meet our grant obligations, where we have to obligate the funding by September of 2024. And so where that puts us, just kind of working back from that date, we're going to, we plan to get an RFQ out for design build teams mid-May with the intent to having a design builder under contract by this November. And then that's really, gives us about nine months to get to 60% design and establish what we call a GMP, a guaranteed max price, and enter in a contract with them to build the project. And so we're still, so yeah, with, with all that, it takes a big team. So it's a lot of parts, a lot of things going on at once concurrently that takes, takes a large, a large team of, of experienced folks in that design build world. So that's, that's kind of where Jacobs is coming in, and that's what this next supplement's intending to do. So you'll see the, we are still working with WashDOT. We need to assign a DBE goal there, so we're still waiting for that. So I don't have the actual agreement here in front of you, but it's approximately 2.4 million. We're waiting for that goal so we can make sure that the participation amount we have in our contract is appropriate. So we have an estimate, but we'll right-size that once we get that goal. But again, this is, it's within the project budget. I think at the end of the day, for Confluence South, we're expecting to spend close to 12 million with this contract. So just to kind of give you where we're heading. And that's because they'll, we intend to have them help us deliver the project all the way through construction.
And all of this money that we're spending on Jacobs will be reimbursable by the project, so.
This is all under the INFRA grant, that's correct.
It's just a cash flow issue for Brad.
Yeah. So with that, I just, I guess, open up for questions.
Any questions for Jake? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve and authorize the mayor to execute supplement number one with Jacobs for additional owner advisor services for the Confluence Parkway project, project number 2201.1.
Second. Motion by Councilmember Roger Nosteian, second by Councilmember Hornby, to approve and authorize the mayor to execute supplement one with Jacobs for additional owner advisor services for the Confluence Parkway project, project number 2201.1. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jake. Glenn. Got a contract with Osborne for some design work for the shelter site.
Craig, good, good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. If you recall, previously, the council authorized a contract for the purchase of 44 pallet shelter units, the emergency low-barrier shelter units for, with 90 beds at the Wenatchee Rescue Mission. Those have been ordered. Originally, they were going to get here in April, now it's more like June or July. Ends up, that's a good thing because the site work won't be done until probably summer or fall. The engineering firm, Osborne, did an initial review of the site and found that the site was suitable for the placement of the units. We now need the detailed site plans. We need engineering plans for, oh, pad development pathways, ADA improvements, stormwater, power extensions, water and sewer for a shower, restroom, shelter, valuation of tree safety, and then they'll put together a bidding package for us. So altogether, those costs would come to $118,452. This previously was approved in the city budget under Fund 117. So this was identified in the, in the budget as a necessary item moving forward for the shelter units to get them installed. We did have some good news recently in that we just received $415,000 additionally from the Washington State Department of Commerce, which will help in this process, which is wonderful because some of the, there have been some additional needs that would be really nice to address, additional shower and restroom facilities at the site, some additional costs. So that was a real welcome addition as far as that funding will come back before council for authorization on, on that use. So we would, staff would recommend that the city council authorize the mayor to enter into an amended contract with Osborne Consulting Incorporated to develop the construction plan, specifications, and estimates, facilitating the placement of the 44 low-barrier shelter units at the Wenatchee Rescue Mission. And the contract amount again is $118,452. And happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions for Glenn? We're moving along to get those shelters in. Hopefully, they'll be in by the end of the year, and congratulations on getting the additional grant money. That'll be really nice.
Thank you.
It's good news.
Yeah, it's wonderful. They've been really good partners on this project.
All right, no questions. I entertain. All right, no questions, I entertain a motion.
Your honor, I will move for the city council to authorize the mayor to enter into an amended contract with Osborne Consulting Incorporated to develop construction plans, specifications, and estimates facilitating the placement of the forty-four low barrier shelter units at the Wenatchee Rescue Mission.
Second.
Motion by council member Harold, second by council member Cuevas, to authorize the mayor to enter, enter an amended contract with Osborne Consulting, Inc., to develop construction plans, specifications, and estimates facilitating the placement of forty-four low barrier shelter units at the Wenatchee Rescue Mission. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Glenn.
Thank you.
Alyssa, leasing a little land for another EV charging station. You always sit in the very back.
Good evening, mayor and council. Alyssa Schaefer, facilities manager for the public works department. Back in two thousand and twelve, the city council approved a ground lease with the company Aero Environment for an area slightly larger than three parking spaces near the intersection of Second and Columbia Avenue. It was for the purpose of charging electric vehicles. The original lease has since been reassigned and transferred to EV Charging Solutions, or EVCS. EVCS has recently upgraded the existing equipment in the existing lease area and would like to expand their charging operations by adding an additional charging station, incorporating an additional parking space. The lease amendment addresses this request. Staff recommends that city council approve the amended lease with EVCS and authorize the mayor's signature. Are there any questions?
This is not a, this is a faster charger, but not the fastest.
It's a level-three charger. It's the step under the fastest.
Okay, would it qualify as a Tesla Supercharger?
I don't believe so, but I could have to look into that.
Yeah.
And I think, and we talked about it on the finance committee, I think to some degree we're probably short in our community charging stations. I think Top will tell you from someone who drives one of those cars, but I, I think we need more, so I think the staff, the private industry wants to add another one, and I think we'll end up with quite a few more over time. I don't think we've found the right location around Pibus at this point for any, and maybe there'll be some more in old station, who knows, but at some point, there'll be more and more of these.
Sort of random question, but what is the rental price? What, how much does the city get back on this?
Six cents a kilowatt hour.
My point being is how many kilowatt hours, no idea, were used this last year.
So, we don't have that information. We have some, some projections.
Okay, yeah.
And they go from eight hundred dollars to twenty thousand dollars, depending on the use of the facility.
Let's assume it'll be closer to the eight hundred dollar number.
We'll go with that assumption, yeah.
Okay, thanks.
All right, any other questions for Alyssa? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve the amended lease agreement with EVCS and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by council member Roger Noshtetian, second by council member Cuevas, for the council to approve the amended lease agreement with EVCS and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Alyssa.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Mr. Hoover, wastewater treatment plant blower improvement project.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council members. Jeremy Hoover, senior utility engineer in Public Works. I'm here to talk about the treatment plant. We have several projects that are going on, some that will happen in the future to do some rehab to this treatment plant, one of which is the blower building improvements. The blower building has three large turbine, uh, blowers in it already. They are old, they used to serve a dissolved air flotation system, which is long gone. That particular unit utilized a lot more air than what our current aeration basins require, and the blowers that were sized for the, those units are much larger than what we currently need. They consume a lot of energy, and we actually end up wasting a lot of the air that we are compressing and putting into the system in order to make it work. The, one, one of the three blowers is almost completely worn out, second one is functioning at decent capacity and has been recently rebuilt, the other one is kind of shaky, so out of the three blowers that we have, one is truly reliable. This project will replace two of those blowers with a more modern system that has controls and equipment that can be replaced as necessary, parts are available, whereas parts are no longer available in large part for the existing facilities that are well over thirty years old. The contract has been, or the project has been in the works since two thousand and twenty-one, it's been included in the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two, and twenty-three budgets. The project was advertised for bid in February, we opened bids on March ninth. Two contractors bid on the project, KRCI and Apollo. Apollo was the low bid contractor at, excuse me, they were both a little bit over the construction budget, which is why I'm asking for an amendment to the project budget here today, to the tune of approximately one hundred and eighty-two thousand. Apollo's bid was one million fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars before tax, and KRCI was at one million ninety-four thousand dollars before tax, so they were very close to the engineer's estimate, but a little bit over. The intention is for this to be a three hundred and sixty-five working day, or three hundred and sixty-five day contract. The reason it's so long is for procurement of equipment and materials. Anything electrical these days has a very long lead time, so once we initiate contract, the first thing the contractor's going to do is get every, get all the parts on order. We understand from conversations with the engineers and the various suppliers that it's about six to eight months lead time before equipment can show up on site. Combine that with a few limitations that we have at the plant when we can slow things down, such as cherry season, we think this will give the contractor adequate time to be able to get the equipment and get it up and running. So, on that note, I'm asking for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract and to amend the project budget in accordance with the sheets that were provided.
Any questions for Jeremy? Overall, how's the current project going?
It's moving along nicely. They just poured some of the last bits of concrete, well, not the last, but one of the main pieces of the upper supports for the mechanical building today. Digestor itself is in place, all the concrete, concrete's there. We're gonna be working on mechanical aspects of it. Apollo just recently started back-up construction, we had a winter shutdown, and they started up Monday. They did the first, the first concrete pour of this season today at two o'clock.
Thank you. Any questions for Jeremy? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to award the contract for construction of the water, wastewater treatment plant, blower building improvement project number two-one-zero-six to Apollo, Inc., and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract on behalf of the city, and future authorize an amendment to the project budget.
Second.
Motion by council member Hornby, second by council member Roger Noshtetian, to award the contract for construction of the wastewater treatment plant blower building improvements, project number two-one-zero-six to Apollo, Inc., and authorize the mayor to sign the construction contract on behalf of the city, and further authorize an amendment to the project budget. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jeremy. Mr. Bird Scooter himself, Rob Jammerman.
Good evening, mayor and council, Rob Jammerman, Public Works Director. I'm gonna take this Bird Scooter agreement, extension agreement tonight, and what I'm, I went low-tech just to help speed up the agenda tonight, so this is actually from a PowerPoint, the presentation that the Bird Scooter representative gave to the Public Services Committee this last Tuesday, and this is just sort of a, I thought this was the most interesting slide in his presentation. This is the data from last year, and since the public can't see this, I'll read it. So, they had about a hundred scooters deployed throughout Wenatchee last year, they had twenty, over twenty thousand rides occur in about, I think it was around an eight-month, eight-month period. The average travel distance on a scooter is two point six four miles. In total, they, the scooters were used for over fifty-three thousand miles. The average ride duration was about twenty-two minutes, and they, when they convert that all into metric tones saved of CO2, it's about seven point five-five, don't ask me what that means, so. All I know is it's good for environment. So, this agreement before you tonight is, we're asking that you authorize the mayor to sign the extension agreement with Bird Scooters. The agreement is the exact same agreement we had with them, it's just extending it for a year. It has the thirty-day out clause at any time, so if Bird isn't feeling like it's working or vice versa, if we feel like it's problematic, we give them thirty notices, thirty days' notice, they pack up their scooters and leave. In general, I would say, since Public Works was fielding some of the complaints, as well as I think Tammy and Laura, we, we saw a little bit of a peak at the beginning when they deployed, and then they tailed off throughout the year, and we, we received very few complaints after that. We have two very good account managers that, so they are tracking, you know, they have trackers on the scooters, so, so one is left up at, you know, on Western, they go up there and bring it back and put it in a spot where it's gonna be rented, and so there, what we've been told is the same account manager, and they're excited to get the Wenatchee program back on the ground.
That would be Tony and Tony.
Yeah, correct. And so, I think that's about all I have, but do you have any questions? Oh, I will add, there was some, there was some press about the, perhaps Bird was maybe closing down there, they're, they're all in the US, Europe, kind of all throughout the world. When we talked to their account manager, he said they're primarily were scaling back in Europe, but Wenatchee, and just really focusing on the markets that are profitable for them, which of course any business would do, and they said Wenatchee is, is a profitable market for them, and they want to stay here, so. Any questions?
No questions for me. Council members, any thoughts? I know we talked about it at a couple of different committee meetings, and so I, I'll leave it up to you guys to, to decide what direction we go.
I will say, I've seen our attendees at the conference, at the convention center writing these, so, yeah, I thought it was pretty good.
Okay. Well, should we get a motion on the table then?
Your honor, I'd make a motion for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the extension agreement with Bird Scooters.
Second.
Motion by council member Cuevas, second by council member Hornby, for the city council to authorize the mayor to sign the extension agreement with Bird Scooters. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Rob.
Thank you.
Department of Ecology, Water, Financial Assistance Agreement, Darcy Matiota, how are you tonight?
Good, thank you. Good evening, council and mayor. I'm here tonight with an agreement in front of you from the state of Washington Department of Ecology, Water Quality Combined Financial Assistance Agreement, WQC twenty-two-three, WE N A T C eight zero 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 five four. Basically, this is a stormwater financial agreement for a grant for the city to build a stormwater project in the area of the Pershing Street between Spring Water and Maple. This area is currently drains to the Number One Canyon Drain. This project will eliminate the flows from the Number One Canyon Drain by extending an urban collection system to met to the existing Maple Street stormwater system. This stormwater project will install approximately two thousand lineal feet of pipe and a series of best management practices from Spring Water to Maple. In addition to the water quality improvements, this project will reduce the flooding risks associated with the Number One Canyon Drain by piping the stormwater in the area through a series of pipes, catch basin, drywells, and other BNP's that are determined throughout the design process. A six-inch cast iron water main from nineteen fifty-six will also be replaced, and we intend to put new sidewalks on the Pershing Street as part of the project. The financial impact of this project, if we're planning the design, is three hundred and ninety-seven thousand dollars, which includes a twenty-five percent match from the city of ninety-nine thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. In addition, there's a professional service agreement for CPH Consulting Services in the amount of two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty-two dollars, which is funded by this grant. The funds for the match have been budgeted in our stormwater utility fund. This has come before you in December, I brought this at December to ask for permission to apply for this grant, and Ecology has been good to us, and they have awarded this to us. If we accept tonight, my ask of you is to allow the mayor to sign this agreement, and we will move forward with the planning and design of this project.
Thank you, Darcy. Any questions for Darcy? We've obviously got two of these, we've got another one from Walla Walla Next, but sort of slightly different, but any questions?
You, you piqued my interest when you used the word sidewalk. Would that be going on the east side of Pershing then? There's quite a bit of sidewalk on the west, except where the manufactured home park is, at the Maple Street intersection.
Yeah, most, mostly on the west, right? Yeah. We're working with the sidewalks preservation program on this one, it's on their list.
Yeah, because there isn't one on that side.
Yeah.
Every chance we get to add sidewalks, we need to figure out how to do that. Any other questions for Darcy? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for city council to approve the Department of Ecology Water Quality Combined Financial Assistance Agreement for the Pershing Street Storm Water retrofit project and the professional service agreement with CPH Consulting for the design of the project and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by council member Roger Noshtetian, second by council member Hornby, to approve the Department of Ecology Water Quality Combined Financial Assistance Agreement for the Pershing Street Storm Water retrofit project and the professional service agreement with CPH Consulting for the design of the project and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Same song, second verse, what's next?
Yes, same song, second verse, only this one is for Ecology Agreement Number WQC twenty-two-three, WE N A T C eight zero 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 seven six, for the Walla Walla Storm Water Outfall retrofit grant. The Walla Walla Outfall was constructed at the north end of the Walla Walla Park in nineteen seventy. The outfall discharges to the south end of the Heran Natural Area in the Columbia River. The basin includes two hundred thousand, or sorry, two thousand five hundred and eighty-six acres of various land use, including fully residential, commercial, and industrial. This outfall has reached the end of its life cycle. It's currently underwater, and it is not accessible for inspection and maintenance, nor does it have any water quality treatment. The city applied for this grant to replace the outfall with one that will include pretreatment and relocate the outfall above the water level so we could access that for maintenance. The funding will allow the city to study the alternatives for the replacement and development of engineering plans to ninety percent, which will include a bid package for advertisement for construction. The city will apply for a construction grant later with hopeful construction in two thousand and twenty-five, and we have secured Osborne Consulting Incorporated for their services to study and design the alternatives for city staff to move forward. The total cost of the planning and design for this is two hundred and ninety-eight thousand, which includes a twenty-five percent match of seventy-four thousand, five hundred dollars. The scope of work for Osborne Consulting Services is a hundred and thirteen thousand, four hundred and forty-seven dollars, and the city entered into professional service agreement for the work in December. The funds will be matched with the budget of the stormwater utility project. Any questions on the project itself? This one has quite a bit to be determined. It could stay in place and be repaired, or we might move it. We're asking Osborne Consulting to look at those options, whether it could be moved somewhere around the park or other shoreline, or maybe just repair it in place. That will be their heavy lift through this study.
So, stormwater's not supposed to be underwater?
It's better when we can see what's happening with it. It's easier to clean and maintain.
All right, any questions with Darcy? If not, I'd entertain a motion.
Your honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the Department of Ecology Water Quality Combined Financial Assistance Agreement for the Walla Walla Storm Water Outfall retrofit project grant and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by council member Roger Noshtetian, second by council member Hornby, to approve the Department of Ecology Water Quality Combined Financial Assistance Agreement for the Walla Walla Storm Water Outfall retrofit project grant and authorize the mayor's signature. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Darcy.
Thank you.
Appreciate all your work. Hi, Jessica. We're gonna test some east Wenatchee. We're gonna test some East Wenatchee Water District water, it sounds like.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jessica Shaw, Deputy Public Works Director, Utilities. And tonight I have your consideration at interlocal agreement with one of our regional water partners, East Wenatchee Water District. Um, last fall, um, the commercial lab that normally tests a lot of drinking water wastewater samples in the valley closed unexpectedly right before Thanksgiving. And so these drinking water samples are, of course, very important for public health, and they have very time sensitive, so from the moment you collect it, the clock starts ticking. And so there's been some concerns from local water utilities about where, how to get these samples tested. Thankfully, the city of Wenatchee has our own accredited drinking water lab where we test for these bacteria samples. We've actually had this lab for over 30 years. And so it gets a great asset for us, and so we've had others reach out to us, one of them being East Wenatchee Water District. So, um, in working with them and supporting them as our regional partner, we are presenting for your consideration this interlocal agreement where we would test those drinking water samples for East Wenatchee. They would, of course, pay us for that work that we're doing and our costs associated with that testing. And we also wrote in that if another lab were to be, you know, opened in Wenatchee Valley or other alternatives came up, I believe East Wenatchee may even be considering their own drinking water lab. Uh, then the city, you know, this is not our normal business, but at this time, given the current circumstances, um, we're suggesting that we should help out in this area. I'm happy to answer any questions you have about drinking water testing.
Any questions for Jessica?
Where are the samples collected for drinking, like?
Excellent question. So, the Department of Health requires that every month, water systems go out, and you collect a number of samples from representative places all over the city. So we go to schools, to hospitals, and they're spread out so that we get water samples all over the city, and we're checking for residual chlorine, and we're also testing for bacteria. So, East Wenatchee does the same thing. So every month, we're out just making sure that the health of the water system is good.
Thank you.
All right. Any other questions for Jessica? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'll make a motion for the city council to approve the interlocal agreement for water testing services for East Wenatchee Water District and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hornby, second by Councilmember Kulas, for the city council to approve the interlocal agreement for water testing services with the East Wenatchee Water District and authorize the mayor's signature.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Water Right Mitigation Agreement, Jessica.
Stay right here. So, our next, um, item for you to consider is a fourth addendum to our Temporary Water Right Mitigation Agreement with Crown Columbia Water Resources. Um, this is the agreement that we started back in 2016, and this was to lease out some of our water rights, uh, to be used for irrigation. Um, Crown Columbia did not have anyone to use the water until 2020, and so that was the first year that we received lease payments back to the Regional Water Group to be able to get some money back for the use of our water rights that we're not currently using for our communities. And, uh, that was with Granite Farms, so you'll see Granite Farms is also now a party with this agreement. Um, there was a third addendum that was just signed last fall, but in December, we learned from Department of Ecology that the pathway for permitting this lease and use of the water rights was no longer, they determined it wasn't gonna work. So we had to go back and come up with a new pathway, which is this temporary change application. And so, um, this will allow us to continue to lease the water to Crown Columbia. Uh, we also recently learned, which was another change to the agreement, was that Crown, um, that the property that's currently being leased by Granite Farms is actually for sale. It belongs to the Port of Walla Walla. And so if that property were to happen to sell in the next two years, then that could change their ability to use the water, at which time we would get a slightly lower lease agreement, depending on how much less water was used if they sold some of the property. Um, so just some contingencies there that Crown asked to be included. So this is for two additional years, and of course, our main goal is to make sure that our water rights are secure. But this is also a benefit of being able to get some lease payments back, um, on the use of our water rights. Are there any questions regarding the fourth addendum or the temporary change application?
Yeah, we've seen this annually, I think, or sometimes even more than that, so, um, although, uh, it sounds complicated, I, I think we're in the right spot, and, um, it's nice to get the money into our water system, and we're not using it as you can go and watch it go by.
Yeah.
So, nice to have somebody else use it, and, um, and I think the legal team's done a great job of protecting the water right that's ultimately will be used in the region.
Yes.
All right. Any questions for Jessica? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I move for city council to approve the fourth addendum to the Temporary Water Right Mitigation Agreement with Crown Columbia Water Resources LLC and authorize the mayor's signature.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Harold, second by Councilmember Cuevas, to approve the fourth addendum to the Temporary Water Right Mitigation Agreement with Crown Columbia Water Resources LLC and authorize the mayor's signature.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
And, uh, our last item is regarding an additional opioid settlement, uh, with other defendants. So Danielle, or Brad? You look more like Brad.
Yeah, well, I apologize for that.
It's all right.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, last year, as you mentioned, council authorized the city to join on a nationwide settlement, um, for a nationwide opioid settlement, and it will provide the city with over 600,000, just over 600,000, um, over 17 years that can only be used, uh, to directly respond to the opioid crisis. Um, this could be used for treatment, for prevention, um, and even law enforcement services that are directly related to opioid, uh, response. We now have the opportunity to sign on to a second, uh, opioid settlement, and we have to sign on to this, uh, this agreement that the state attorney general has sort of facilitated. Uh, and, uh, we have to sign on to that by April 18th, I believe was the date. Um, and this early estimates that, looking at the size of this settlement versus the size of the last settlement, looks like they're about the same size, and so we should be able to get another 600,000 over the next 15 years. So all in all, we should be able to have $1.2 million, uh, for the city, uh, for opioid response. I don't think we have formalized what, uh, what path we'll go down to, to utilize these funds, but, uh, we'll be getting them for 17 years, so we have some time to think about how, how to use them. So tonight, we're asking for authorization, um, to sign on to the settlement, uh, prior to April 18th.
Thank you, Brad. Any questions for Brad? We're getting more than we thought. I didn't know there was gonna be multiple opioid settlements, so. Bit surprised, but good for us. All right. Any questions for Brad or Danielle? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Your Honor, I'd make a motion for the county, city council to authorize the finance director to sign any documents approved by the mayor and the city attorney to effectuate the opioid settlement with Tiva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Kulas, second by Councilmember Harold, to authorize the finance director to sign any documents approved by the mayor and the city attorney to effectuate the opioid settlement with Tiva, Allergan, CVS, Walgreens, and Walmart.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Brad.
Thank you.
Thanks Danielle for your work on that. Uh, mayor's report, uh, I'll say sort of generally big, uh, we're still monitoring, uh, events in Olympia. I think the two things we continue to monitor are the Aquatic Center bill, which, uh, passed the House Rules Committee, it's on to finance. Sounds like there's pretty good momentum, so we're hopeful that that bill will get across the finish line. Um, we are monitoring the transportation budget, and we still believe that the 85 million for Confluence Parkway is in the governor's budget, the senate transportation budget, and the house transportation budget. But they've got a lot of work to do on that over the next year or, or, excuse me, month or so. So we will continue to monitor, uh, those things. I think, obviously, getting the, the PUD agreement complete, and then, uh, staff getting the, uh, seat park, uh, approval, we're moving along on Confluence Parkway. Still have a couple of major items internally to do. One is obviously get the NEPA documents sent in and get those approved. And a few other little things that, uh, Laura and I will be working on, but I think overall, that project is moving along quite nicely. Uh, I did attend Rails and Ales for a while, a couple of Friday nights ago, lots of people there. Um, so looked like a great night. Um, hopefully, they do it again next year. Now we gotta talk about some stuff, and, um, the lines to get a beer were too long, and the lines to go to the bathroom were way too long, so. Uh, so, but we'll work on some of those things, I think. Um, Laura, you can help plug in some stuff? Okay. We did, we did meet with, uh, the Microsoft, uh, folks. They were in town, uh, on Monday, the 13th. They're having an open house in a couple of weeks at, uh, Mission View Elementary School. If you wanna go learn more about their plans for, uh, building data centers in the Malaga area. Uh, and again, I did testify at the House Rules Committee on last Tuesday, the 14th, did that via Zoom. And let's see, what else? So we've had some other internal discussions on, on things, but nothing. Um, St. Patrick's Day Parade was a blast, as always, so, um, thank you for letting me entertain you in my green suit. And, uh, I did attend the port breakfast on, uh, Wednesday morning. I think Linda went to the port lunch today, it was the same stuff. And obviously, the port's extremely busy doing lots of, lots of things in our region. Laura, anything to add? Okay. Council members, anything for the good of the order?
Um, let's see. The museum boards met on Tuesday, and, uh, was mostly dedicated towards continuing discussions of the, uh, of the capital campaign and the redo of the facility. And there are gonna be some additional partnership issues that the city will need to address to, uh, perhaps, um, entertaining a historic preservation credit system. But, yet, the city owns the property, and we may have a conversation with the museum board about, uh, an additional lease extension that would help qualify them as the owner
Excellent.
for the credit system.
Okay.
Uh, also had two link transit board meetings this week.
How'd the one on?
The wheels on the bus still go round and round.
Okay, is it today's, today's meeting? How'd that one go?
Yeah, so the, uh, meeting today was, uh, the, you know, there's still this, I'm gonna try to be really polite, but a sentiment to, and to derail the implementation of the second 1/10 of a percent sales tax that the voters approved in 2019. And today, uh, after three and a half hours, we agreed that, um, to put that, to, to do, to repeal it, um, the, the problem is repealing it also disqualifies us for, uh, about, uh, 1.6 million dollars in grants each year. Um, and so we decided, it, when it would have to go, we'd have to resolve that by April to go on the August ballot, asking the voters to repeal.
Okay.
We decided not to put it on the April agenda, so that's not going to, to happen. Um, it still does not mean that they might want to, um, postpone collection from January of 20, January 1, 2024, to a later date. Uh, but there seems to be some ambiguity, um, well, there's no ambiguity, well, there's ambiguity. You would still lose that state grant funding. The ambiguity is whether you could gain it back if you went, went back, so, um, it's.
Yeah. Well, thank you for representing the city and sitting through that. I know they're trying to get a lot of stuff figured out. And Mayor Crawford called me yesterday, and I said, no, I said, Mark represents Link, and he's going to the meeting, and yeah, so I, thank you for doing that.
Had a chance to chat with her today.
Good. Excellent.
And, and so, you know, our position is that we want the additional 1/10 of a percent implemented in January 24.
Yeah, that's what the voters voted for.
That's what the voters voted for.
And I, I will add, I, I did meet with the Y MCA last week, and I think we have a tentative lease agreement for those dozen or so parking stalls. Um, so I anticipate they'll be adopting that pretty quickly, and then you'll see it at a council meeting, uh, near us sometime soon. Linda, Jose? Top, Travis, anything? When do we meet again? We meet on the 13th? Okay, so this is our five-week month, so we've got a couple of weeks off. So, with there being no further business?
Oh, we have a professional basketball team in Wenatchee.
Have you, do you go watch?
No, but they presented yesterday at LTAC TPA, and, uh,
Oh, cool. I wanted to watch.
Yeah, yeah. We have that, the Big Horns, so I think the next home games are April 13th and April 16th. So, we should check it out.
Yeah, we gotta go support the Town Toyota Center and go, go watch the hoops. All right. Anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned.